It's 6:41, so we're going to get this thing moving. So as you probably know, I'm John Hitesh from Hudson County View, and this is the Hoboken City Council debate for wards two and six. For those of you that maybe don't follow me on Twitter, Councilman Ramos unfortunately can't make it. He's ill, so obviously wish him a speedy recovery. But we still are going to continue on, of course, and we have some candidates here in the second and sixth wards. Before we get started, we're going to hear from a couple of people from Stevens. Leading us off is Evan Panaris, and he is the Government and Community Chair for the Stevens Student Government. So Evan, if you'd like to just tell us why you guys are here and why you have this voter registration table, just take a few moments. The floor is yours.
Hello, everyone. So as I was introduced, my name's Evan Panaris, and I'm the Committee Chair for Government and Community at Stevens. As a junior biomedical engineering major, I understand the importance of connecting academia with government. Of course, I'm more of a healthcare-related major, but medicine knows no boundary, and government is really about connecting even seemingly unrelated areas together into one. I'm super excited for the debate. In the back, we have a voter registration table. So if anyone isn't registered to vote, please come check it out or just to say hi. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Evan. I mean, I think this kid has a future in government and/or politics. So having said that, we're going to hear from one more from Stevens, and this is the Senior Director of Corporate Government and Community Relations. That's Gregory Townsend. So Greg?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. My name's Greg Townsend, as he just said, Senior Director of Corporate Government and Community Relations here at Stevens. I want to thank you all for being here. I also want to thank Eduardo from the Hoboken Quality of Life Coalition and John from Hudson County View for putting together this really important forum. I think it's no coincidence that Stevens and Hoboken have both kind of been rising in stature and reputation over the last year in parallel. I think it's a real indication to me of how important this relationship is and how we can both kind of lift each other if we're in constant communication and working together. There's so many ways that we, as an institution, have engaged with Hoboken over the years. It ranges from volunteering at local nonprofits, tutoring local K-12 students, coaching Hoboken recreation teams. And we even have tested some of our research and piloted some research in areas like smart cities and flood prediction. So I mean, the possibilities are really endless here. And that's why we've worked really hard with the students here to encourage greater civic engagement in and around town and beyond. We want our students to feel like they're a part of this community, and voting in these elections is just one of many ways that they can do that. We sit in the sixth ward, but we have students, faculty, and staff in every ward in Hoboken. And we have over 500 alumni currently living in Hoboken, and that number grows every year. I've had the opportunity to meet and work with many people in this room. I hope to continue to expand my outreach and work with even more folks in the years to come. And so with that, thank you again. Thanks to all the candidates for being here. I'll turn it back over to John.
Thank you, Greg. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for joining us, whether you're here in person or you're watching live on Facebook. So with that, Pat is here just in time, and we're going to do an intro, just a quick reminder. We're going to do one-minute intro, one-minute outro, one-minute answer, 30-second rebuttal, of course, all at my discretion. So we'll just go from left to right. We'll start with Ian, and then we'll just make our way down to Councilwoman Fisher. So Ian, you have the pleasure of leading off the show here.
Thank you, John. And thank everybody here for attending. Obviously, they thought they would throw me off my game by putting me onstage as the only boy, and they have no idea. I grew up in a household. It was just me, the only boy, my three sisters, and my mom. So I'm ready to go. In all seriousness, I am a business owner in town. I've brought a lot of good things to town, and now I want to bring it to the city by being elected to City Council.
Thank you very much, Ian. And Marla, go right ahead.
Hi, my name's Marla Decker. I'd like to thank the Quality Life Coalition, Stevens, and Hudson County View for hosting this debate. As your council member, I'm going to bring a new and different approach, focusing on bridge-building and problem-solving and moving away from the type of tone in our national divided politics and having constructive conversations to solve Hoboken's problems. I believe I have the skills to find common ground and get to yes on what we can agree on rather than just saying no. My priorities will include being responsive to constituents across a wide spectrum of perspectives and issues, proactively focusing on quality-of-life issues from things like completing the parks at Monarch and Union Dry Dock to addressing the smaller issues of streets and, of course, traffic and pedestrian safety. Also want to improve our recreational opportunities for youth and adults and our seniors. And I will strive to be a positive example and stand up against hate, bigotry, and tolerance that is now too often surfacing in our community. I believe I have the experience and dedication to get the job done. I'm a mom of two kids who attend public schools in Hoboken. I'm an attorney with decades of experience in navigating complex issues. And I've been a long, active participant in our community, supering as a leader of the Hoboken Democratic Party, president of my Hudson T. Condo Association, and a founder of a program to help Ukrainian refugees, and an active volunteer in the Moms' Demand Action for Gun Sense. And I look forward to tonight's conversation.
Thank you very much, Marla. Councilwoman Giottino, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Thank you, Stevens, QLC, and Hudson County View for hosting this debate. I've lived in Hoboken for 25 years with my husband Joe, three boys, and Jane the Boodle. It's been an amazing privilege to serve Hoboken for three terms. During this time, I've built strong relationships across the city, but most importantly, within my ward. These connections have shaped my dedication to Hoboken and fueled my commitment to effective leadership. I'm an independent voice, never afraid to challenge the status quo or stand up for what's right. What I am not is political. I'm known throughout Hoboken as being the go-to person when something needs to get done, whether it's improving our neighborhoods, advocating for residents' rights, or fostering community connections. My track record includes environmental initiatives, better public space, infrastructure improvements, and sensible development. Thank you all for being here. It's the incredible residents of Hoboken that have made this journey worth every moment of dedication and hard work.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Pat, go right ahead.
Good evening. First of all, I know I'm getting punished for being late, guys. My name is Pat Waiters. I don't need an introduction. I'm here tonight solely for the second ward residents and all the residents of Hoboken to clarify me pulling out of the race. I'm pulling out of the race because what I wanted to bring to your attention is, since July, this spring, I have been harassed, my family threatened, all of this so I could make a decision to stay out of the race. The last smart tactic, the Jeff Henney interview, and it's confusing the people. I'm going to continue to do what I do. Everyone in Hoboken know Patricia Waiters as a fighter. I am one of the only candidates on this stage that could look in your face and say those three words, "I have integrity." I've been running for years in Hoboken. I'm known as the underdog, but I have gained a love and passion for what I do because I'm tired of hearing the same old name when we say Hudson County is corrupt politics. I am here to change that, guys. If I'm ever given the opportunity to serve in my community, I will continue to do what I do. I advocate for all matters of concern, from the courthouse to the jailhouse. Pat Waiters is there. What we're going to do now, we all face with some serious issues. I talk a little fast because there's so much, but I try to get it out. But I'm going to give you the condensed version. We have to stick to the issues at hand.
Actually, Pat, can you start wrapping it up?
Oh, God, mine's going so fast, guys. A resident that's been here since the '60s, I'm wrapping it up and saying this. I have facts for you guys, okay? Everything right now is debatable, but I'm here tonight to bring the facts and hopefully it encourages you and inspires you to go out on November 7th and vote for change. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, Lauren, go right ahead, whatever you're ready.
Thank you so much. Hi, everyone. Thank you for the hosts organizing this event and for Stevens for giving us the space. My name is Lauren Myers, and my campaign is about new ideas and real progress for the sixth ward. I think we need a new perspective on the City Council when it comes time to the key issues affecting our community: safety, small businesses, affordability, and rats, to name a few. I will push to make the sixth ward a safer and cleaner place by adding new stop signs and advocating for increased extermination efforts to better combat our rat problem. As a private citizen, I already give back to the community through my pro bono work as a lawyer, serving on the Hoboken Democratic Committee and as my condo president. As a councilperson, I will help the small businesses that make our city unique, work to make sure our city is affordable, support our schools, and advocate for first-class public infrastructure and services. I look forward to participating in the debate tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. All right, Councilwoman Fisher?
Hi, everyone. Thanks for coming. Thank you to all the hosts of tonight's event. Debate is an important part of our democracy, so I'm happy to participate. When I first ran for office in 2015, the words "engage, inform, advocate" defined public service to me, to be the best public servant and make Hoboken the best it could be. I felt strongly I needed to engage with my neighbors, and they needed to engage with me. Providing transparency and making sure people are informed on issues important to them was critical to building a trusting partnership and being a neighborhood advocate for my neighbors on quality-of-life issues, big and small, was foundational. Almost eight years later, these words still guide my service, and I could not be more proud of the partnership my neighbors and I have built and the strong track record we've created. I believe we've gotten more done in the second ward than any other work, not only working together, but also working very closely with the administration. But we still have a lot to do. We have three parks to finish, very exciting. New York Waterway to show the door, a neighborhood to protect during extensive public works project, a rat crisis to solve, streets and sidewalks to make safer, tax increases to fight, out-of-scale development to stop, and transparency and democracy to defend. And I cannot wait to work with my neighbors to address all of these, finish the important work we've started, and ensure the brightest future possible for Hoboken. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, so just a quick recap for anyone who maybe hasn't seen the other debate yet. So we're just going to keep moving from left to right. So the next question will be Marla first, then Councilwoman Giottino, and so on. And we'll just keep rotating. The first hour, I'll ask the questions, and then after that, subsequently, we'll have these audience questions. We already got about a dozen or so. So if you want to have a question written down, we got the note cards and a pencil over there. So with that, let's get into the actual debating. So the first question that we touched on briefly Friday evening was what could be done to prevent the homeless problem from reaching Hoboken with the growing number of migrants just over the river in New York City? So again, we touched on homeless this briefly, but we didn't hear from the whole panel of candidates. So let's do that tonight, and again, we'll start with Marla.
I think we all recognize that homelessness is a problem that is affecting us nationally as well as vocally. I think there's been some initiative by the administration that was perhaps a little bit reactive and not proactive. But I'm encouraged by the hiring of the social workers through the Office of Constituent Services, which is an office that I support, to help bring services and connect people who are experiencing homelessness to the services that they may be entitled to. I also think that we need to work with our local police and maybe hire some additional code enforcement officers or other enforcement bodies to address some of the issues that people are experiencing.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Giottino?
Hello. I am passionate about helping the homeless. It's something I do every day. I have taken homeless people from on the street to drug rehab, to a halfway house, to living on their own. It's something that I feel we all need to participate in. As for what can Hoboken do better? We could have a better relationship with the county. The county has a lot more resources than we have. And actually, in doing this with homeless people and what I have done, I've worked directly with the county to help me in all of these levels. Very recently, I met with the Public Safety Committee, and I asked for more police in Church Square Park. And anyone who's been in Church Square Park in the past two weeks sees policing there. And the policing is not to harass the homeless people, but it's to understand what their needs are and what we can do to help them. To get from homeless to off the street is a very difficult process. So I'm very happy that we now have two advocates at City Hall that are helping with this. But we do need more, and we need more people on the street helping. Homeless people are not going to know to go to City Hall to find someone to help them. They need people approaching them and talking to them. So if it's about homeless, it's something I have a proven track record of. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat?
I told you, I'm only giving facts. Hiring a social worker for billions of dollars was not the answer. Harassing somebody, calling extra police security and all of that is not the answer. Homelessness is not a crime. People that live here, I want to share a quick story with you with a young lady named Liz, and she wanted me to share this story. Each and every councilperson sitting up here know that that lady been homeless for eight years. It could have been prevented from City Hall. I advocate, I'm not the constituency service person, but people have came to me, I went to court and fought hard. Now that lady sleeps in the bank, okay? So just to add on to the homeless situation, if Ravi had the majority in City Hall, I think it's more important to hire social workers that's scared to even approach these homeless people. Shame on you. That's not the answer. The answer is build some affordable housing. Stop discriminating against strong developers that want to build affordable housing. Even people that live here, the rents are crazy. We all are key away from being homeless. Keep that for change the way.
Thank you, Pat. Lauren?
Thank you. I think that we need to fully engage the county and the state. And Hoboken has, to make sure that Hoboken has the resources it needs. Homelessness does not happen in a vacuum. We need to take a multidisciplinary approach that takes advantage of the resources that the county and state are supposed to give us. I've met already with Commissioner Romano, and this was one of the first topics that came up. And if I'm elected, I will continue to develop that relationship with him and make sure we have the resources we need. And while the city did hire social workers, I think it's unclear to the constituents and the homeless population exactly what they do. And I think we need more transparency into their jobs and how we can better put the social workers together with our homeless population to help them and give them the services that they need.
Thank you. But everyone will go first, so then you can rebut. Councilwoman Fisher?
Yeah, like my everyone on stage has said, homelessness is clearly a national problem. And you know, it's a difficult one because I think at the heart of our community, we start with compassion for people, and then we try to figure out a way to help the people and keep our community safe, et cetera. I would agree that we do need, I think the city is not fully connected with the resources within the county. The city's approach has been very ad hoc and very patchwork quilt. And I don't know that they've been able to respond to what has been a significant increase. I'm on the Public Safety Committee, and we recently learned, for example, that Carepoint Hospital has changed its policy where it used to allow homelessness or people that are unhoused to spend the night if they're brought in by an ambulance. They're often brought in by an ambulance from surrounding towns. They no longer let them spend the night. They put them out after two or three hours, which has been the single biggest contributor to the increase in Church Square Park and within Hoboken. And when I asked the directors and people from the administration, they were there, have we reached out to Carepoint yet? Have we reached out to the county to understand what additional resources we need? The answer was just no. And so the good news is--
Can you start wrapping it up?
Yep. Our committee of four councilmembers and the directors are working hard to change that, and I am absolutely positive of that effort. Thanks.
Thank you. Ian has to go first, then you can rebut. Go ahead, Ian.
Mayor Balla, open the bathrooms 24 hours a day. I get it. The homeless people make a mess. Maybe they do illicit drugs or other nefarious things in our public bathrooms. And I'm looking at the camera because I'm talking to him right now. But it's inhumane for us to have nowhere for our homeless people, our homeless population, our unhoused, to use a restroom in the overnight hours. A bonus would be maybe a warm place to sit and relax. Another idea that I have is we should maybe use some of our tax dollars to provide grants to local businesses that hire homeless people. And just a quick story, John, if you can give me just a little bit of leeway on the time. My wife and I were at Jefferson Coffee. We saw a woman in the back, and I told my wife, "I think she's homeless." And I offered her a job. I went back after we left, and I offered her a job. Unfortunately, she didn't take it. But a lot of times, and my wife had no idea that the woman was homeless. I could tell. But a lot of times, the people among us are homeless, and they just need sympathy, and they need a way to be productive in society.
Thanks, Ian. Pat, you had something else to say?
I would like to see what homeless look like. I'm a dollar away from being homeless, but you could never tell because you hold that in. I just want to say this. Jen Genatino could witness this because she also was a strong supporter with Liz. And it brought tears to my eyes because just like me, we offered her clothes. We offered everything. I even had her sleeping in my car. So it's what's the point I'm trying to get across with all of these wonderful ideas they donated to at election time because it's a debate? Me and Jen have facts that this is ongoing and it's far too long due that we have to do something about it. The lady is still homeless nine years later.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so we'll keep it moving. Let's talk a little bit now about Union Dry Dock. So as most of you probably know, it will start with Councilwoman Giottino, just to be clear. So as most of you know, the council approved a three-year lease with New York Waterway in February. And there's subsequently been some public meetings about Maritime Park. Of course, there's a connective waterfront park that the city has been working on, and there's been some public inputs solicited on that. But now it's a three-year lease with a two-year option after that. And obviously, some residents are expressing concern that this lease might never end. It's just going to keep getting extended. So if elected or reelected, what would you do to work with New York Waterway, the administration, and the public to ensure that this is only a temporary lease?
First, I'm just going to start with a little bit about Union Dry Dock. When we did the revow, I found out that Union Dry Dock actually filed for a tax appeal to lower their taxes because they said their property value was only $3.4 million. And they won. And at that time, I went to Mayor Zimmer, and I said, "We should acquire Union Dry Dock now." The sellers, the owners of the property actually want to sell their property. Now is the time to acquire it. Unfortunately, we did not have support on the council at the time for that, and it didn't happen. But it would have saved all of you a ton of money. And we would actually have Union Dry Dock now, and it wouldn't be a refueling station for New York Waterway. What I would do is actively work with New York Waterway and state officials and the mayor to find somewhere for them to go. This lease is fraudulent to begin with. In order to lease property that is bought with open space trust money, you have to have a referendum. The city did not do that. The City Council voted on it, and I voted no. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat?
All right, I'm going to just piggyback what Jen said. I also was at every meeting with the Union Dry Dock, the biggest mouth in the room. And I said, when Ravi showed that last display about the park and the public's input, I said, "We in litigation. Tell the people the truth. You saying a park going to be built, and we up in litigation. The lawsuit is in effect. I'm not lying." And it's just sad to be a part of, what I could say, like going to the meetings and stuff and know what they're saying isn't factual. And I'm just sad because I'm hoping that Jen Genatino, Tiffany Fisher, continue doing what we do best, that's working together. Unfortunately, Jen, you said, with the mayor, we see that's not happening. It's them against us. That's when we got to break the chain. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Lauren?
Thank you. I think that it's important that we evaluate every plan, lease, purchase in our community on a case-by-case basis. And I'm someone who will take a close look and a fine-tooth comb to any project that comes my way. And while I was not part of the City Council during this particular project, I know that I will bring questions, analysis, feedback from constituents on all projects that come my way. And so I look forward to the opportunity to being able to do that for this one.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fisher?
Sure. You know, this has been a battle we've been fighting since I was on the council in 2016. As Jen mentioned, you know, to be honest, the mayor, our mayor now inherited a terrible situation. We didn't acquire Union Dry Dock when we had the opportunity. It changed hands, and we had a new mayor, and suddenly we had this situation. I know he's worked very hard. And, you know, right now, we own Union Dry Dock, but I, similar to Jen, voted no on the lease. And we voted no on the lease because we reviewed it very carefully. It's a terrible lease. Not only is it fraudulent, as Jen mentioned, it is not conditioned at all upon them actually exiting and building their refueling terminal in Lee Hocken. So there's no incentive for them to leave. We know they're moving their entire operations. They're in a process of doing that now. So what I would do if reelected is continue to apply pressure, work with Fund for Better Waterfront, with the administration, with anyone to identify another location. And while New York Waterway are here, it's going to be critical to make sure that they're a good partner for our community. They're not disruptive to the residents around. They're not disruptive to the Hoboken COVID. And we're just going to have to be on that every step of the way.
Thank you. Ian?
Unfortunately, I live in the house that's the closest to Union Dry Dock. So this is a terrible lease. I'll reiterate that. It's an $18 million property. The rent is something like $4,500 or $4,800 a month. Just think, if you had a $1.8 million condo, a beautiful condo, would you rent it for $450 a month? The numbers just don't make any sense, except for one thing. When they're in holdover, which is going to be after the option, I believe their rent will quadruple to something around $20,000 a month, which is still way, way, way cheap for the value of the property. So I would guess that unless the lawsuit with Fund for Better Waterfront, unless it goes in our favor, we're going to have them as bad neighbors for a very long time, unfortunately.
Thanks, Ian. Marla?
So I'd like to start off by saying I'd like to change the tone of the discussion about not what the contract says or it doesn't say or whether we should engage in litigation to undo it and focus on what we can do going forward. So first of all, you know, first thing we need to do is to make sure we have a back-and-forth, two-way discussion with New York Waterway to address our concerns. There are concerns about safety of the voters who use that space. There is concerns about noise. There is concerns about traffic. Some of those were addressed at the planning board meeting when this was discussed. But I think we, and when New York Waterway committed to an open communication with receiving feedback from the community, as your councilperson, I will make sure that that feedback, the comment box, if you will, is not only available to people in the community, but that it is followed up on and they are held accountable for the promises that they've made to the community about how they will operate. Second, you know, we do have a plan to build on that part of the park that belongs, that is not leased. I think it's really important that we focus on getting that part of the park built out because at the end of the day, when this terminates in five years, which it does, by the way, we can go back and forth. I've read the contract. It will terminate in five years. It's going to be a regional political issue, right?
Can you start wrapping it up?
It's going to require working with the county, the state, to make sure that the will continues to build it and to maintain it for Hoboken because Hoboken will have the right to exit them and can only be overridden by politics of the greater state. I'm going to work on relationships with those stakeholders, and I'm also going to make sure we build that park so that we are at their door and the incentives for anyone to tell us that it needs to go to a different use are going to be completely different from a regional political perspective.
Thank you, Marla. Pat, you look like you've had something?
Contracts in Hoboken have become an easy escape for lying lawyers, also in Hoboken. Five years going to come so fast, and you're going to see there still will be no park. Or else, like she said, like Ms. Tucker said, with the county, the state, whatever level it's on, if our mayor keep cutting these backdoor deals, it's obsolete. I'm telling you all again, this has been ongoing. These solutions, they all sounding good tonight because it's an election. November 7th, when you vote, keep that in mind. Don't come to me November 8th so I can say I told you so, okay? Don't cheat away all the contracts you want. But we have seen year after year, time after time, it's greed and money. after time, it's greed and money. Thank you. About a park.
Thanks, Pat. Ian?
So after year five is when, when the true holdover clause kicks in, um, and, and yes, I think there is a way to evict, uh, and, and, and I, I do this a lot, commercial leases, so I'm quite familiar with all the different stipulations. But yes, it's possible to evict, but I have a feeling that if I'm New York Waterway, I threaten what I threaten when I negotiated the lease, I say, well, if you evict me, we're just gonna have New Jersey take it away from Hoboken by eminent domain. So we will never be able to evict, so if, they're gonna pretty much be able to stay there indefinitely with the threat of, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna get this taken by, uh, by eminent domain from, by the state. So I, I don't see any way that they'll ever leave. Uh, and, and that really is the truth, and I think unless this Fund for a Better Waterfront thing goes our favor, I'm just gonna be resigned to the fact that we really messed up big here and that we're gonna, we're gonna be stuck with this for a really long time.
Thanks, Ian. Councilwoman Fisher?
Sure. Um, a couple things. First of all, I, I don't at all think that we should wait until the end of year three or the end of year five. We should be fighting right now, uh, to understand this lease, to understand if for some reason, um, there's, the, the lease will, uh, hold over and they have an opportunity to stay. We heard recently that, um, with a fraudulent lease, actually, which is, is what we have, uh, that their rights to stay are actually stronger than if they had a valid lease. So imagine that, we just heard that recently. And right now, you know, our mayor has told the community that he believes they're gonna go, oh, they're gonna leave, don't worry, they're gonna leave, let's just build a park, right? Well, we need our mayor to question this lease, to question New York Waterway's motives as much as the residents. I will tell you that when I speak with second ward-
Start wrapping it up.
They're angry, and they, they only wanna focus on New York Waterway leaving, they're struggling to think about the park because they're so concerned New York Waterway won't leave.
Thank you. We good to go on this topic? Okay. All right, so let's, uh, this time we'll start with Pat, and let's, uh, switch gears here, let's talk a little bit about, uh, campaign finance. Specifically, what I'd like to, uh, hear from the candidates about is this so-called Election Transparency Act. So for those of you that follow statewide politics, on April 3rd, Governor Phil Murphy signed into law the Elections Transparency Act, but in reality, this was an overhaul of campaign finance throughout the state, and it actually raised the, uh, contribution limit significantly, at least double in most cases. So, with that in mind, what do you think about the governor signing this, uh, this law? And what would you like to see done about it on the local level, if anything?
All right, first of all, I never run a campaign where I ever received a penny from anyone. So I felt real, it was bittersweet with me to see the Balla Cartel fought hard for this. I, me and Manny stayed in meetings at 12:00, midnight, arguing the fact that an election was slowly approaching, and mysteriously, all of a sudden, they wanted to change the finance. I was comfortable with the 500, $5,000, uh, limit. But now, I receive my campaign reports, mine's is all zero, and when I looked at those numbers, shame on you. Shame on you. Anybody could clearly see that greed, the greed, so it's a no-brainer. I am totally against it, I said it then, I'mma say it now. I, my campaign reports is zero, all the way down. So now, this affect a lot of things, development, pilots, all of these little backdoor deals that they make, this money has gonna hurt the community. So please, I'm telling you again, be wise, get up, November 7th, the Balla Cartel must go.
Thanks, Pat. Marla?
Thank you. Um, I think that the recent law has obviously changed the level of contributions, but with that also comes increased regulations and increased reporting. And so I think it's not the correct characterization to just look at it in terms of the amount of money increase, that comes with specific ties to that money. We obviously have campaign, um, election reporting responsibilities as candidates. Our initial reports are due tomorrow, so we have a responsibility as candidates to disclose where that money's coming from, and we have to remain transparent with the public, and I think that's the most important thing here, that the public knows who's donating to you, how much your, how much the donations are, and if people want to contribute to someone's campaign, that is their right to do so, and I don't think that we can stop people from giving their money to candidates who they support and who support them.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fisher?
Yeah, so I was very vocal, uh, against this, like, the, uh, the Transparency Act because it was literally anything but, it's a very anti-democratic law change, it is very pro-incumbent and not, I don't mean an incumbent for me, but like incumbent in high leadership. Um, it has a number of mechanisms that make it harder for, uh, new people that are running for office to raise money. It lowers the, um, the amount that is required for people to disclose their names, so it used to be 300 dollars, you could donate and not have to disclose who you are, now it's 200 dollars, and in certain environments, people don't want to, you know, we, uh, don't want people to know, um, who they're donating to, especially if you have a retaliatory-type leadership. Um, and it's, uh, it was shocking, actually, to me to see Governor Murphy make this change. So it actually doesn't, it lessens the reporting requirements for like independent expenditures, dark money coming into, um, the, uh, campaign, and it also, uh, completely weakens the Board of NJ ELEC, which is the, the entity that is the one that, um, holds all candidates accountable for reporting. Um, so everything about it is, uh, is actually, um, anti-democratic and pro, you know, classical New Jersey corruption.
Thank you. Ian?
Uh, thank you. I, uh, I've imposed my own limit, I'm, I'm not gonna take, uh, anything over 300 dollars from any individual contributor. Uh, my suggested donation is 18 dollars. Um, I believe that this is a small, local election, and that those candidates that are taking hundreds and hundreds, or even thousands of dollars from, uh, contributors, even if they're family members, I, I think, I think there's a conflict there. I don't think it's appropriate to take so much money from any individual, uh, from unions even, from other PACs. Uh, I, if I were a voter, and I am a voter, I would be looking at these ELECs and I would refuse to vote for anybody, for anybody that takes a lot of money from, uh, from any individual, uh, contributor.
Thank you. Marla?
I mean, I think, I share the sentiment that everyone seems to share on this stage, that transparency into our elections is important to our democracy and understanding whose may, where elected candidates' incentives may lie, uh, is an important purpose of the reporting mechanisms, reporting mechanisms that are associated with running for public office. You know, I've heard arguments on both sides about the, the objectives of the Election Transparency Act. I think they tried to solve some problems, um, through a different mechanism of like increasing contributions, but then not allowing you to do other things elsewhere. Um, I think it will remain to be seen whether they've solved it or they'll have to fix it again. I think what I don't love about it particularly, and your question was, what do we need to do for, um, our, an ordinance in our city, you know, is, I think it took away, it's a one-size-fits-all across the state, and took away local municipalities' ability to put in some of their own rules, given their own, you know, histories, dynamics, et cetera, and, you know, our pay-for-play laws, for example, got replaced by the states, and I think that that's a change that I would advocate for, is to allow our municipalities to, you know, have some mechanism to enforce some of their own laws.
Thank you, Marla. Councilwoman Giattino?
Um, when I first got elected was when Hoboken adopted those pay-to-play laws, and they were the strongest in the state, and to see the state just rip that out from us is ridiculous. But the biggest problem I see with this law is they have now put, it's not, I wouldn't say it's the biggest problem, but the issue that I'm seeing is that they put a 200 dollar limit on if you have to disclose your name or not. And I can't tell you how many people gave me checks for 300 dollars, and because I know how people worry about retaliation, I reached out to them and I said, did you give me a check for 300 dollars because you think I don't have to disclose your name now? And the answer from all of them was yes. And I returned all the checks and asked them to give me 200 only if they didn't want their name disclosed, which is a ridiculous environment that we live in.
Thank you.
Every mechanism in the world will not help a person without integrity. Thanks for saying that, Jen, I'm impressed. Um, like I said, I was threatened when I ran against Anthony Romano a couple of years ago. The ELEC report people threatened to sue me. I had to pay a fine for not reporting that I got no money, I had zero. I still wound up paying a 275 dollar fine, cause I didn't put my ELEC reports in. That's why I was so upset when they, the state stepped in. I said, shame on our municipality. We, we could post our own legislation, we could put forth our own legislation, why do we let the state oversee? Like anything else, we should've been fighting for that to say, no, we want our pay-to-play laws like this, like ABC. But they, this is what happened when you have a mayor-
Pat, start wrapping it up.
-state, work with the state on a higher level and other higher politicians, this is what happened.
Thanks. Anything else? Okay, we will continue. So, um, Pat, did you start that one?
Yes.
Okay, so Lauren, we'll start with you this time. Now, on September 25th, through a spokesman, Hoboken Mayor Ravi Bala said that he is seriously considering running for Congress. Since that date, there's been a poll, uh, assessing certain city council races and also the 8th district congressional race. And, uh, since then, Representative Rob Menendez, who's of course the incumbent, has said that he plans to seek reelection. Now, in the event that Mayor Bala does decide to run for Congress, would you support him? Why or why not? And what do you think the implications are here in Hoboken?
Thank you. Um, I completely support Mayor Bala and his run for the House of Representatives, and I have no doubt that he can do both at the same time. He is also an accomplished lawyer who juggled multiple cases at a time, and there's no reason why he cannot continue to govern Hoboken, obviously with the assistance of the city council, and run for the House of Representatives. And I think that it would be great for Hoboken to have one of our own people representing us in Washington DC. I see the faces around me, and I don't think that it's appropriate for my answer, is that I support the mayor, and I think we all should support one of our own when they are trying to run for election, whether it's all of us up here at the city council, or it's our own mayor trying to run for Congress to support all of us in Washington DC, which I think we all deserve.
Thank you, Lauren. Councilwoman Fisher?
Sure, um, I don't think it's a surprise to anyone that he's running for office. Uh, you know, when, when he ran for mayor the first time, Jen Giattino, Peter Cunningham and I met with him, and Dan Bryan, uh, and he said to Jen, you know, if you support me now for the next four years, um, I'll support you. Four years later, you know I don't wanna be mayor, you know I want higher office, I would like to be a congressperson. So this comes as no surprise, it was a when, not an if. Um, I think it's a shame for Hoboken, we have so many quality of life issues that have deteriorated. We, you know, knocking on doors, people are frustrated, um, with the rat crisis, they're frustrated with, you know, pedestrian safety issues, they're frustrated with, uh, with the quality of our streets. And so I, I, I don't know who I would support, I, I don't disagree, um, with Lauren here that, of course, having someone from Hoboken in a congressional seat, um, would be great. I also, you know, I don't have any issue with, uh, Rob Menendez, he's done some great things already in his seat. Um, I don't hold him accountable for, uh, the sins of his father at all. Um, so I think as and when, if the mayor decides he wants to run, um, you know, and Rob, you know, will, will assess both candidates at that time.
Thanks, Ian.
So, uh, two years ago, I made a cartoon about not being able to find any garbage cans when you're out walking your dog. It was, I think it's a pretty funny cartoon. Uh, it's on my YouTube channel, Ian for Hoboken. Uh, and at the end of the cartoon, if you look closely, the garbage can says on it, uh, "Bala for Governor." And, uh, it's, it's, it wasn't predictive. I think this is something that anybody that's been here for a long time, we all knew this. Um, and I don't have a problem with it, per se, but what I do have a problem with is, uh, is what Lauren started off with, that he can juggle, uh, because I don't think he can juggle. Um, we're supposed to have a full-time mayor in Hoboken, we do not have a full-time mayor in Hoboken. That's a full-time salary we're paying. Uh, Councilman Fisher, um, on the dais, and Councilman Giattino, um, probably can verify that that's a full-time salary, and we don't have a full-time mayor. So I think maybe, uh, now that he's moving on to Congress, I don't know, do we want a full-time congressman, or do we want a congressman who's also a lawyer on the side? I, I, I don't know how I feel about that, and I don't really know Rob Menendez that well, but he seems okay to me.
Thank you. Marla?
So I think I take a little bit of a different view on the issue of whether or not, you know, whether or not Mayor Bala has political ambitions is a negative thing. You know, as I've sat and learned a little bit about politics, like becoming a congressman or becoming a senator is essentially a promotion. We usually don't give inexperienced people, you know, roles at government that are at high levels. So the fact that Mayor Bala has wanted to work for a promotion, if that's true, I don't think that's a negative thing. I'm proud to be endorsed by him, I think, I think Councilwoman Fisher and I are knocking on different doors, cause I've knocked on thousand, and it's, I hear a lot of people who love this city and who are happy. Yes, we have issues to fix, it's not perfect, but we, 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 we can be proud of some of the accomplishments that we've had. And I do think that having Mayor Bala elevated to that position, when we need funding for a lot of things in this town, we have infrastructure issues, we have parks we want to build out, we have schools that need improvement in terms of facilities and safety, and getting some federal dollars would be fantastic. So I think that supporting one, a person who is committed to Hoboken, um, at that federal level would be an excellent addition for the city.
Thank you. Councilwoman Giattino?
Thank you. Um, clearly, having someone from Hoboken, either being a congressman or a senator, like when we had Senator Kenny, is so beneficial for Hoboken. But, and I remember the conversation that I had with Councilman Bala at the time, and Councilman Cunningham, and Councilwoman Fisher, because the words out of his mouth were, you know I have no interest in being the mayor of Hoboken, my interests have always been in being a legislator. And when someone says that to you like it's normal when you're running for mayor, there's something wrong there. So, do I think he should run for Congress? He can do whatever he wants to do, maybe it's better for all of us and he won't be our mayor anymore. Thank you.
All right. Hold your applause, hold your applause. Pat?
I'll need to get this, I think, and applaud. A promotion versus integrity and respect. Nobody, just look back two years ago, I mean, two terms ago, when Ravi won mayor, the very next day, in Hoboken, it was a huge controversy about him having a full-time job, we could not get a city hall, no one answered the phone, he wasn't handling his responsibilities right here in town. So I would be fearful for this young lady to say tonight, he can do both. They fail to realize how wonderful of a mayor I keep hearing, I mean, uh, lawyer Ravi is, nobody's talking about he's been sanctioned, maybe he had too much on his plate when that case happened, okay? So, we not gonna play this tonight, oh, Ravi against us, against them. It's not about attacking Ravi, it's about his actions. I told you I'm giving you facts. We are all suffering at the hands of this mayor, so to cover it up or that we attacking one another, we're not. And I wanna say this, no official should come into office with the mindset of, of you being a, that being a stepping stone. This is what's just a stepping stone for Ravi, so you not gonna get 100% representation because he didn't plan on being mayor anyway. And in the meantime, our quality of life is horrible-
Pat, start wrapping it up.
... suffer the impact.
Thank you. All right, anything further on this? Okey-dokey. So we're gonna do one more from me, and, uh, we'll start with Councilwoman Fisher, then we'll get to these great audience questions. We got about a dozen, just to remind you, there is a notepad, or, I'm sorry, some note cards, it's a pencils, if you're interested in submitting one, obviously, uh, we'd be happy to add some to the pile. Now, finally, uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't, I didn't wanna be repetitive, but I'd be remiss if I didn't ask you guys about rat control. So, obviously, the city council has passed, uh, some measures to do some things with containerized garbage, with the, uh, maintenance, and also the creation of streeters, but what do you think about the response thus far of the city for this rat crisis, and what do you think needs to be done to mitigate the situation as quickly and expeditiously as possible?
Sure. Um, sorry. Uh, so up until, you know, six months ago, rats just were not an issue, um, in the second ward, I probably got three phone calls in seven years, um, seeing a rat, and then we had, ended up having a rat in the station on 15th Street, actually, in, uh, the building that my opponent lives in. And, you know, we raised that with the city, we watched the public, um, expressing concern about rats citywide, and the city really dragged their feet. But that said, since, um, all the public press- But that said, since all the public pressure that we've applied, we've been able to pass some good legislation, I think, that will help remove some of the food sources locally. It's certainly not enough. But the one thing I did is, everyone probably saw my rat map, I did a rat survey where 540 people responded, and we were able with all that feedback to identify hotspots citywide. And I've been working with the Department of Environmental Services and Health and Human Service, more than Environmental Services, about ways that we can approach these hotspots, kind of in addition to the one-size-fits-all laws that we're making. Because when we have an infestation at 1500 Garden, the circumstances around that are a lot different than the infestation issues at 300 Parks. We should get, you know-
Start wrapping it up.
Yep. On 15th Street, we're all working together and we're solving it, and I hope around all the hotspots, the neighborhood, the neighbors in the area can solve their local issues as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Ian?
So unfortunately, Councilman Cohen isn't here. Over 18 months ago, near my business, which is in the 5th Ward, I got reports from customers that they were seeing road ends late at night, near garbage that was being put out by a restaurant too early. And I reached out, as I would think is the right thing to do, to the councilperson in the ward, which happened to be Phil Cohen, made him aware, and nothing happened. And I went then to the business myself and asked them if they could handle their garbage more carefully, and the response was, what could we do? We don't have anybody here after 7:00. We have to put it out, there's no other solution. Obviously, if we had taken care of it all 18 months ago, it wouldn't be here now. But, to move on to, why are our municipal garbage cans uncovered? If it's so important for residential garbage cans to be covered, why are there so many municipal garbage cans that can be uncovered? And are they magic? There's a cartoon about those magic garbage cans, check out my YouTube channel. The final thing is, and a suggestion-
You start wrapping it up?
Yeah, I'm going to wrap it up. I'm usually very quick. Slowest act, if we had some kind of insurance type thing where we had a fixed contract with an extermination company that just ramped up and ramped down by their discretion, maybe we could not have to go through all sorts of hoops to get more funding, if that makes sense, like a fixed monthly fee.
Thank you, Ian. Mala?
So yeah, with the rats issue, there was a burrow behind our building. And I put the responsibility for that happening on city government for lack of proactivity about the conditions that were created to have that infestation. We live next to Lee Hawken, where there's been a significant amount of development. They know when that happens, rats come down the hill. There's the space that is to be used for rebuild by design that the city has been sitting on and not maintaining it, and I think that's where the rats got started. And also, a restaurant was, you know, built without a good plan for where they're going to keep their garbage. And I do hold Councilwoman Fisher responsible for not being proactive in our neighborhood to see that those things were coming before it happened in our backyard. And, you know, I think the city needs a, should have had, and needs going forward, a person who is dedicated to animal control. We have all sorts of issues. We have rats, we have geese, we have skunks, who by the way, when you got rid of the skunks, I think the rats came. But in any event, we need a person whose job it is to do that, because the Health Department and Waste Management folks, they have a lot to do already. So we need someone who's focused on this, and this is, the example of my building proves it.
Can we start wrapping it up?
Our property owner, let me just finish this point, our property owner was the one who figured out how to finally get rid of the rats that were living in the burrows. It was a suggestion that he came to on his own, through his own research. He's gotten rid of the burrows behind our building, but there are rats elsewhere in the neighborhood. Does the next property owner know anything about what we did? No. Does the city know? Because I've talked to people in the city now, have you heard about how we solved our rat problem by throwing dry ice down some of those burrows? No, hadn't heard of that before. So there's a lack of best practices being disseminated across the city. And I think that's why you need a job, and I'm, you know, glad that we have the survey, but I think we need more proactive information about how to prevent it and what's working, what's not.
Thank you. Councilwoman Giattino.
Thank you. Actually, Councilwoman Fisher did reach out to me about your building and the ice cubes that we were using, and I told several other property owners to use them as well, so thank you for that, it was very helpful. I'm pretty sure the building manager there had told her what they did. This issue has been ignored by the administration for far too long, and they've not been proactive enough. You know, no council member has the expertise needed to rid the city of rats. We need an expert, that's what we need. We need all hands on deck, we need an expert at the top, and we need an army beneath them. You know, council members have added lots of great ordinances and have great ideas. Every council, you know what, even residents, everyone has lots of great ideas, but that's not going to solve the rat problem. We need someone who is overseeing everything and is looking at it holistically. If I'm baiting a tree pit in front of my house and my neighbor is doing nothing, we are never going to get rid of the rats. The solution to this is have someone on top, a leader, who can get rid of the rats in the city.
Thank you. Pat?
All right. I seen Jen on Channel 7 a couple of days ago, and that's a start. I've been at every council meeting saying, get rid of the eateries. I said, I know it's a bunch of your buddies, but those rats came from those eateries, especially with the food and stuff being embedded in the ground. I think they should pressure wash the sidewalks, that'd definitely help. You could have saved that money for them garbage cans, and I'm active in every ward and every, in this whole community. The day right after the garbage can thing was passed, the garbage truck rides by, emptied the garbage out, leave the container off in the garbage, and leave the bag out anyway for the next shift, two hours to pick up the garbage. So the garbage cans was obsolete. To put that fine on a resident, I was upset about that, because it's not the residents' responsibility to pay for their ideas. The residents should, all of us should stick together with all hands on deck. I should inform the 3rd Ward, the 3rd Ward can inform the 4th Ward. It doesn't matter about place to blame, and Tiffany, I got to give you credit for that. I guess me and you knocked on the same doors, because they did thank us to appreciate what we're doing, but there's, but so much we could do if we don't have the majority in the vote. And I know, y'all know where I'm going with that. So no matter what we say-
Start wrapping it up.
-work together, if Ravi have the majority, it's their way or the highway. Thank you.
Thanks. Lauren?
Thank you. I think everyone was in agreement here that the administration did not act fast enough, but we have two councilpeople on this panel who were part of the administration, so I don't think it's entirely fair to point the blame when they could have done something more. I think hiring someone or promoting someone who is an expert in this field is a great idea, but why hasn't that been done yet? So I think we're all, these are all great proposals in theory, but we have people here who can get it done now. And while I'm not a current councilperson, if elected, that will be a first priority of mine to hire someone who is an expert in this, because none of us are an expert in rat mitigation, and we need to hire someone who is. Number two, I think we have federal money that we can use to pay for citywide extermination. The city received $26 million in federal relief, and we should use that money towards rat removal, or by hiring someone or other measures to get this done. So I think there were options on the table, and it's unfortunate that they were not explored, and now the problem has continued to persist.
Thanks, Lauren. I get the sense we're not done. Councilwoman Fisher?
Sure, a couple things. First of all, the council's not part of the administration, and we can't hire people. What we can do is, we can advocate-
Hold your applause.
Sorry, we can advocate and put pressure on the administration and request, which we've actually been doing for a long time. Second, my opponent just isn't correct. We on 15th Street, every property on 15th Street has worked together. I put an email together, introduced all the property managers, and they've been coordinating very specifically and sharing what works in one place and what works, what doesn't work. The infestation's not gone behind that building. I worked very closely with her property manager, I will give him credit. He, under pressure from the-
Start wrapping it up.
-myself, he identified this great solution, but they are coordinated with the city, everyone is aware, and that's how you get something done, is when you work with everyone to get it done, and we are, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Mala.
I agree, you should always work together, but I think to the point of what the city council could have done, they could have passed an ordinance about the garbage and the enforcement about how streeteries should be kept clean, and, you know, all the things that we just did, six months to a year ago. So I don't think you can just say, well, the administration didn't hire somebody. You could have passed the ordinance that you just passed, that you guys, I think, at least Tiffany voted against many months ago.
Again, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, it's all right, go.
This is my rebuttal, she cut in front of me first time. Anyway-
Just, go ahead.
Anyway, like I said, Tiffany and Jen did all they can do. Tiffany and Jen does not make up the whole administration. Before the meeting even started, you guys know that we don't have the majority, so to play place to blame tonight, that's disingenuous. We got to work as a team, regardless to what ward you from, and administration have a huge influence on everything that's happening now, because Ravi and his colleagues had the majority vote. Thank you. Just a little clarification for the people that's watching this, it's not, have nothing to do with the council, it's 4 to 5.
Thanks. Ian?
So, just a point of clarification, the city council isn't going to be able to spend money. We can pass resolutions, we can pass ordinances, it's the administration, I mean, the mayor's office that would hire somebody. And then we would see a budget, and we would decide, okay, yes, or okay, no. So, there's no councilpeople on the administration, it doesn't work like that. It's really two separate, two separate part of government, I guess is the simplest.
Thank you. Is there anything else on this? Okay.
Just responding to what my opponent said, I absolutely supported the ordinances to clean the streeteries, et cetera. The one ordinance that I didn't vote for was the bad ordinance that we didn't need to vote for that night. We had submitted the first lid ordinance that was completely flawed. We had an amendment that we were introducing later in the evening, so we could have, we voted no on the first one because it was flawed. We got so much feedback from the public saying how flawed it was, and we were voting yes on the amendment, so I voted no on the first one, I voted yes on the second one. And the reason why they demanded a yes vote on the first one is, we saw the next day they wanted their headline. So we ended up having the amended version, which was a better version for our community, and that's what you can always get from me, to focus on the details and make sure that our laws, you know, are, whenever possible, work best for our community.
Anything further, folks? Okey dokey. So now, we will get into the audience questions. We got quite a few, we certainly won't get through them all, but we will do as many as humanly possible. So, the first one says, "There once was a man from Nantucket..." I'm just kidding, it doesn't say that, it says, "While many drivers at Hoboken treat stop signs as optional, is the solution to pedestrian safety adding more stop signs? What is the solution?" And I think we're back to Ian.
So, I think stop signs do help, and Paul was gone, but he had made the suggestion, and my wife is a big proponent of four-way stop signs everywhere. But I think that, while it seems like a nice idea, it winds up making people ignore stop signs, maybe that are a little less important. So, and I don't know if I'm making that much sense, but clearly, more stop signs at important intersections is a way to make intersections safer for pedestrians. And they have those flashing LED, John, you know the flashing LED stop signs? I think those are more visible.
Thanks, Ian. Sure. So, "While many drivers at Hoboken treat stop signs as optional, is the solution to pedestrian safety adding more stop signs? What is the solution?"
I think it's not a one-size-fits-all answer, right? There are some intersections where stop signs are the right answer, there are some stops, some intersections where we need a better light. So, you know, I think in our neighborhood, for example, I think there's some streets that have seen a lot of significant development, and we haven't done an updated traffic study in a long time, so I think one of my priorities for the 2nd ward is to do some updated traffic studies, because I think those are what inform you as to where you're having traffic that doesn't meet, doesn't match the traffic control that you have there. And I think you also just, you know, we need to continue to work on both enforcement of the stop signs that we do have, or the traffic stuff that we do have, as well as just keep working with the Vision Zero Plan and supporting that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Giattino.
I have actually added more stop signs to the 6th ward than any other councilperson has added to their ward in my tenure. But you don't just get to add a stop sign, there's a process for it, you have to do a warrant study, and if that intersection warrants a stop sign, that's how you get it. So a councilperson just can't request a stop sign, nor get arrested. For enforcement, we don't enforce it at all, at all. And we all know, if you're on the highway driving, and you're going, even if you're going to speed limit, and you see a police car, you can't help but slow down. So if we just did a little bit of enforcement, people would follow the law and stop. All we need to do is start enforcement.
Thank you very much.
I hope that is true, Jen, because people zoom through them stop signs like they don't exist. I don't care what high beam light you got coming out, you get those sparks out of those things, they run right through the stop sign. And basically, it's not the residents that live here, it's coming from New York. I live on Willow, and that's a county road, Willow and 12 between 12 and 14. A week ago, my friend's son got struck by a car on a respirator, where the car went right through the stop sign down there by 14th, coming into Hoboken on Willow. So it's good cools to whoever put the stop signs there, but I just, enforcement might help too, Jen, but it could be a study, whatever you say, in Hoboken, but we need more attention to pedestrian safety, period.
Thank you, Pat. Lauren?
Thank you. I definitely believe in stop signs, and I think we need more of them in the 6th ward. And while Councilwoman Giattino says that in your tenure, you added the most amount of stop signs in the past four years, the last term, there's only been one. And I live right between Brandt Elementary School and Otto Strada, one of the most frequent restaurants in the 6th ward, and there is no stop sign on either of those corners. Park is also a county road, like Willow is, and people go speeding north on Park to get out of the city. They don't have a stop sign at 7, 8, or 9, and they can go all the way to 10th Street. And I see it every single day when I walk my dog, or ride my bike, or drive my own car, they, we need more stop signs in the 6th ward. And I do agree, we need more enforcement, and I think that traffic violations need to be addressed, and the only way to deter people's behavior is to actually follow through with that, so I completely agree with the enforcement point.
Thank you very much, Lauren. Councilwoman Fisher?
Sure, I think we definitely need to do more to slow traffic down. I think there's kind of three components of that. One, enforcement, this is probably a theme I hear from more people all the time, why aren't we enforcing speeding, intersections, et cetera? The second is, and I've spoken with our director of the parking utility, we really need to talk with some of the major users of our roads from outside of Hoboken, like the Ubers and the Lifts and the FedEx and the Amazon, and just talk to them about what they need to do in our own town, and so they understand what the rules are. Third, we just have to create a culture of safety, we just don't have one, right? We, you know, we have Vision Zero, it's something I definitely support, but part of Vision Zero is really connecting with the community and understanding what the needs are at every different intersection, and that part actually was pulled out of the process. And so I think everyone needs to be accountable for their own actions, pedestrians need to put their phone down when they cross the street, you know, cars need to slow down going through, bikes need to be respectful of traffic signals and stop signs. And we have an opportunity to work within our community and really create a culture of safety, which we don't have. And finally, I totally support stop signs, not every intersection's the same. You know, we're working on a traffic light at 15th and Washington-
Start wrapping it up.
Yep, and we've done some interesting initiatives to slow traffic at both Constitution and North Sinatra, where we elevated the intersection, and 15th and Garden, where we put in a little island in the flashing pedestrian lights, both have worked.
Thank you. Anything further? Yeah, go ahead, Ian.
This is a little different, because I'm honestly just stumped, and since there's two experts in the city council here with the dais. What's the deal with 10th and Hudson, with you push a button and lights flash to let people know that you're crossing? Because I don't see that being very good, and maybe I'm just ignorant to the phenomenon. What is that? How does that work exactly? I mean, I know how it functions, but how does that work for us to cross? It takes kind of extra time to walk over to the button, to push the button, so I never push it, because why am I doing that? Why not just the stop sign there?
I think Mala had something first. Am I correct?
I don't have the answer.
Okay.
No, I said, I don't have the answer to Ian's question about 12th and Hudson.
Right.
I did want to talk about enforcement just a little bit. You know, and I don't want to get into, it's a totally different question about, for the police, but I've, I've also been a person who's thought, like, we can, why don't we have more enforcement? I have two kids, the hardest thing about raising them in Hoboken has been the age that they've gotten to where they can walk by themselves. It's a big leap of faith to let them do that. So safety is really important to me. But we do have a police department, I've talked to Director Franti about it, I've talked to Director Sharp. Like, we do have a police department that has a lot of competing priorities. And sometimes, traffic enforcement is not getting on top of the list. And I can't necessarily criticize for that, there, that's, it is a whole other question. Someone asked me about, you know, what, what do we need to do to support the police department? Because they don't have the staff that they need right now. But, so my suggestion, or my recommendation as council personnel, try to get done for the second ward, is that we need a code enforcement officer, which is not a police officer, but someone who can enforce some of our local ordinances, including traffic, and create that deterrence without diverting our police department, who have a wide variety of things to address, um, to focus on.
Thank you, Marla, Councilwoman Giotino, you had something?
If I remember correctly, it was because it did not warrant a stop sign, and that was... That's what the county was willing to do, but that's why.
Okey dokey then, uh, so let's keep it moving, we got a lot here. And this time, we'll keep going down the line again, let's go back to Marla to start. Uh, this one, I believe is pretty straightforward, but it could take us to a bunch of different directions. So, what policies would you implement to increase public parking if elected, if anything?
The question is to, how would you, what policies would you implement to increase public parking?
Yes, if anything, uh, if elected.
Well, I think, you know, to literally increase public parking, we need more facilities to park in. Um, I think that comes from both, um, additional municipal garage, which I think is a, if, when we develop the northwest corner of Hoboken, right now, that is like, kind of like traffic overflow for the second ward, where you find parking if you can't find it locally. Um, so once that is developed, I definitely think we need a municipal garage there. I also think that when we build out new development, and I know that we've, you know, as a city have rules about how much parking should be per building. I think we need to, uh, rethink that, especially for the, the last of Hoboken to develop, because there's not a lot of excess space, in terms of maybe increasing those numbers of available parking. And I also think we need to make sure that our new developments have alternatives to using cars, right? I mean, for example, I live in a building that was built, I don't know, 15, 20 years ago. You, there's no bike room, right? So people have to store it in their apartment, the, the last building got a few bike racks. Like, we need to encourage developer buildings to, uh, accommodate other types of mobility other than vehicles, whether it be bikes, or scooters, or ride shares, or electric vehicles, like, let's en- let's encourage new development with the idea of the multitude of ways that people can get around, besides cars and needing to park it.
Thanks, Marla, Councilwoman Giotino?
Um, we need to fix the midtown garage, because we have a whole floor there that no one can park on, which is ridiculous. And also, the, uh, Garden Street Garage is down at capacity, because there are many spots in there that cannot be utilized at this time. But, I think it's also important that, my aunt recently moved here, and she moved here with a car. And she got rid of it because she didn't need it. The price that we pay for on-street parking is a point where it's just worth it to have a car. You're paying $52 a year to park on the street, it's really worth it to have a car. Um, people actually even do calculate, I can get four tickets a month and it's still cheaper than parking in a garage. Um, so, we need to revisit what we charge for permits, parking permits, and I think that would help eliminate a lot of cars in Hoboken.
Thank you, Pat?
I'm not gonna lie, there's no solution for parking, there is no parking, okay, guys? Um, I will do everything in my power to help with that. I just want to share this real quick, my daughter just moved in a luxury apartment right downtown in Ward E. She said to me, "Ma, I have to pay $100 for parking," I thought it was included. I said, "Pay it, because it costs more than that when they tow your car." Hoboken is up to almost $200 a pop when they tow your car. I wonder who getting here for that money and whose pocket, and I bet you they have a parking space like Mayor Marla. Since he's been mayor, my daughter worked right across the street, had no parking signs in his house, the first three houses on the corner. You don't believe me, go tomorrow, okay? So it's not fair for whoever asks, asks that question, because people that's not being impacted will sit up here and lie to you and say, "Oh, it's parking." Yeah, because you don't have parking. You can't get in touch with the parking director, uh, Mr. Sharp, for nothing. This has been going on for years. He will not, he'll tell you, email him, and will not answer those emails, guess why? Mr. Sharp don't live here, so he don't have to worry about parking. Let's start with getting somebody that lives here.
Pat, start wrapping it up?
Wrapping it up. Since the 60s like myself, there's been in, affected with parking, and I'll give you a good solution. Don't lie, thank you.
Thanks, Lauren?
I think that we need better parking garages throughout our city. There is one on Garden Street that only allows for cars of a certain length, which is at, not helpful for all of our families that have two, three kids and larger cars that cannot fit in the garage. We need garages that actually serve the interests of our citizens. And there was a survey that went out about what to do with that garage, whether to demolish it itself, and I am completely opposed to that plan. We need that garage there, we don't have another one in that area. While I haven't seen the results of the survey yet, I hope if elected, I will make sure that we have enough parking in, for the sixth ward residents. And I also agree that there has to be more enforcement of non-residents parking on residents' side of the street. I see it every single day outside of my apartment, there are people with New York plates who are not residents and should not be on our side of the street. So I think we need to enforce that, and we need to make sure that there are spots and spaces for our residents first and foremost.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fisher.
Yeah, um, parking has definitely been, uh, something that I've always part, supported, more public parking. Um, I would agree with Councilwoman Giotino, we have to revisit the permits, um, and the cost of parking, however. Um, I have a lot of low-income, uh, housing in the second ward, and so I'm very protective of making sure that they can still live in our city and afford to park here. They can't afford the $300 and $400 a month garages. We've added 26 parking spots in the second ward, and so, I was elected, every time we touch a street, I do everything I can to get more street parking spots. The city wanted, um, 10 electric vehicle stations, uh, the slow ones. We got rid of the slow ones and kept just two of the, um, high-speed charges. Um, the guard, I agree with everyone here, we can't, uh, we can't get rid of the nine, the 9th and Garden parking garage. That's almost 250 cars that are gonna have to find spaces on the street, which is just gonna have a rippling effect into every single ward, it's just gonna make things even more difficult. Um, new development, um, I agree that, uh, we need, I think actually we need to have more parking again, but interestingly, we, we require parking, and if people have parking in their building, we don't...
Start wrapping it up?
Yeah, we don't charge them higher to actually park on the street, or just not even let them, you know, park on the street. So I think, and then just an uptown parking garage, I've always advocated for that in the Northwest part, so, for the Northwest plan.
Thank you, Ian?
So I've, uh, I've been to Manhattan, where these people, uh, have these lots where they jam in so many cars, it's unbelievable. I mean, they leave no space, and it takes a long time to get the car back out. But that seems like it would be an ideal, uh, situation, where we could offer a lower cost, maybe half-off garage parking monthly, to people who don't frequently use their cars, uh, and charge them each time they access their car. On top of that, uh, thereby fitting a lot more cars than an existing garage. Uh, and there is a cartoon all about that, that I made two years ago. Um, the other thing is, I'm really a proponent, uh, I, I do understand, we all want to save parking for residents, and then we want parking for teachers, and then we want a separate area so that this special, special group can park and that special interest park. But when you have all these separate boxes, it really, uh, it, it doesn't work efficiently, because you encounter situations where there's just an empty spot, it's just sitting empty, but nobody can park in it, because that particular person can't, isn't here. So, I, I am in favor of simplifying our parking rules, make them easy. Make them as simple as we can possibly make, them within the constraints of utility, uh, but, but that's how I stand, and that's how I think we can definitely improve parking, and no, it's not hopeless.
Thank you. Ian, you got more cartoons than Warner Brothers, man, you got a cartoon for everything. Okay, alright, that's not more than Warner Brothers. Anything further on this topic?
Yes, quickly, I just want to add two things. I agree with Councilwoman Fisher that adding, you know, to the cost of parking in the street probably disproportionately affects, um, lower-income members of our community, and, and I do want to keep Hoboken affordable to them. I do think that one thing you can target that is maybe, uh, abused or overused is the buying of no parking for extended periods of time, if you have a construction project, uh, or, you know, whatever you're doing, but that, that is, I've seen that as a problem in my ward, where you have a construction project going on for months, you're renting three, four spaces. Um, you know, let's, let's create the price a little bit higher for that, and incentivize the contractors to go, you know, meet, meet someplace else, park, bring their truck and their people together, and, you know, that sort of thing. So I think there are some ways we can raise costs, but just not just plain old parking.
Got it.
Raising costs isn't always the key, we went from $15 for a parking permit to $50. And, and this goes for the rich millionaires that can afford it, too, I feel bad for you, too. It's not always about money. I, if I, if I went, I would, I would put the 10-cent meters back, and you are resident, you could park free. Because it's ridiculous to, uh, City Hall just, what, two months ago, and I vote, Jen and Tiffany didn't vote for this, who voted for them to take both sides of the street and get personal handicapped spaces to administrators? That's horrible, and half of them don't even work. Let's start with that.
Thanks, thanks. Thank you, Pat, anything further, yes?
Um, sorry, just quickly, um, in, in agreeing with, uh, with Marla, we have a situation in the Sycamore right now where we literally have someone that has reserved four spots on one of the brownstone streets for two years, and the neighbors are literally losing their mind over it. And we do have to do something to address that and disincentivize that from happening. And, and Councilwoman Giotino and I have been talking about this for the last couple of weeks, um, and thinking about what kind of ordinance and, you know, changes we can make. The one thing I didn't mention before is, we do need to have less cars on the street. And I think a number of people touched on it up here, we have to incentivize people, of course, to ride bikes. Um, but we just need to find and incentivize ways for people to park in the garages in their buildings and, and take them out of street parking. I'm one of those offenders, I'm the first person, I'm at 1450 Bloomfield, I park there. If I see a street spot, I might park on the street because it's convenient, and we need to stop that.
Thank you, yes, Ian?
Um, I know, uh, that there was a few movies that were being shot in my neighborhood. Um, and for, I, I don't know how long, i- i- it seems like it might've been multiple years. I know it really wasn't, but there was no, there was no parking like on 10th Street because we had a movie being shot. Um, so, maybe they can, instead of parking their catering truck, maybe we can pass an ordinance that requires, uh, film shoots, not to have a catering truck, but solicit our local restaurants and buy their sandwiches there.
Thank you. Alright, so, we will move on to another topic, and this time we'll start with Councilwoman Giotino. So, the audience question is, "What is your position on the potential additional uses at the new Department of Public Works garage that will be built in the Northwest?" And the second part is, "Do you support adding recreation space to the building?"
Of course I support adding recreation space to the building. I support adding recreation space anywhere we can in Hoboken. Um, I actually, I, I think the uses there should be primarily recreational with the DPW site. I don't see adding, there was talks about potentially moving the city council chambers there, um, have, moving the court system there. I think that that's important, that it remain at City Hall. Um, there was also talks about giving the city council their own offices there. I personally don't feel as a council member that I need an office. You know, if someone needs to reach out to me, all they have to do is pick up the phone, and I will either come to them, or we will meet somewhere. But yes, I definitely believe there needs to be more recreational space throughout the city, not, not just there. And if you're asking about a pool, even though you didn't, I don't think it's the greatest place in Hoboken to have the pool. I don't think the pool should be all the way in a corner of the city. I think we should find a location for the pool that is more centrally located.
Okey dokey, Pat?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Okay, what is your position? Uh, the potential additional uses at the new Department of Public Works garage that will be built in the Northwest, do you support adding recreation space to the building?
In the, in the Northwest, what's the exact location, that's the old con... They took that man's property?
No.
Okay, so, yeah, I support it 100%, I'm sorry, I thought that was the, the guy's property they was taking. Yeah, but I support that, and if they can have a portion, you said, for parking, that'd be great.
Okay, uh, Lauren?
I support the current recreational programs and expanding them to address the needs of our families, our seniors, and our community at large. I think it's important that we are investing in programs and facilities that will actually be used. So it, we need that transparency with the public to see what they want, and make sure that we're meeting the demand, whether it's fields, indoor courts, pickleball courts, or, um, a indoor basketball court. I think we should be better at investing in facilities, but that also comes with maintaining them. And we need to make sure that they are modernized and they have the services that our residents deserve when they want to take advantage of these facilities.
Thanks, Councilwoman Fisher.
Sure, I think a couple things with it, uh, with regard to recreation. I think we have to, um, step back and look at, you know, what our plans are citywide. We don't really have a strategic plan, we're just kind of catering to whatever the local neighborhoods are, without really stepping back and saying really what the needs are. Um, I know for a fact that the needs are greater than the field space that we have, so, of course, we would use it for some form of recreation, but we should really look at all of the, the city's resources and think about all of the needs of the city before we make those decisions. Um, second, the one thing I would say about that site, it's a very big site. So, half of it is a DPW garage, the other half of it is an unknown use. Um, I actually live next to the DPW garage. I've, literally, I, I had a balcony that overlooked, um, the DPW garage, and it was never an issue. I think there's a lot of uses you can put next to it. Um, but the one thing I would say is, the city should be looking at all of its, uh, parcels that it owns and sitting down with the Board of Ed to be able to figure out what it can do to support the Board of Ed's needs to expand their facilities, even if it's building a temporary facility where you can move students for one or two years while you're rehabbing some of the, um, the other, uh, buil- the other schools. So, that's what I think we need to do more.
Thank you, Ian?
So, uh, on the subject of recreation, I, uh, I have the only family entertainment center, that is my business. I bought Hoboken 17 pool tables, seven golf simulators, four bowling lanes, just recently installed, six ping pong tables, two foosball tables, two, four dartboards, and I relocated the board game cafe that was on Washington Street into my space. Uh, re- recreation, uh, I, I think the difference between me and everybody on the city council, and everybody here at the dais is, I'm going to actually bring us the recreation, I will actually do it. It's not about the promise, it's, it's about what's actually delivered. Uh, you're gonna be promised this election cycle, you're gonna be promised pools in all different locations. And if I'm elected, I will start digging that pool, it will happen if I'm elected.
Thank you, Ian, Marla?
Uh, building more recreation space in Hoboken is a priority of mine. You know, I've experienced firsthand watching what my kids and their friends don't have enough of. Um, you know, there are teams, they don't get to practice. They do practice, but they share it with, with half the court, with somebody else. Um, so I support having more recreation space, I think of all varieties. I think expanding our recreation program in general is a priority of mine, not just in terms of expanding it by, to eight, different age groups, adult recreation. I think we need to not just concentrate on sports, I think there are a lot of kids who do other things besides sports. Um, I talked to, uh, about the recreation program, and I think we could do something with our seniors and our kids that we're not doing now, that some other towns have done in terms of their recreational and cultural programs, um, to bring part of our community together. In terms of facilities, I would have liked to see the DPW space moved uptown in the Northwest, and that, all, the, the, the complex that was suggested with the, uh, police and fire, I think the police and fire do need new space. I've toured those facilities, they're way outdated. It is not helping our shortage of police officers in this town to have a dilapidated, uh, police headquarters that doesn't serve their current needs. You know, to give you an idea...
You start wrapping it up?
I'll just add this one, one fact. You know, they have a locker room for the female officers. It's very small, if they add another one, they don't have room for her in the locker room. Like, it's that level of, we need more space. So I, I'm disappointed that the city council didn't work with the administration to come to a plan for that municipal space that wasn't too big, too tall, too round, too square, whatever it was, just something that we can work on, and my... And my point being, we have to find ways to get to yes on things we need and not just sit in our isolated bubbles of who we vote yes with and who we vote no with, and don't come to a solution.
Thank you. Is there anything else on this topic? Okay.
Just quickly, on the municipal complex that Marla was just mentioning, believe it or not, the police actually want to stay close to the path. That's just where they want to stay. We own the majority of that property. We have an opportunity to actually develop a police station next to the existing police station at some point, and so I know that there has been conversations about this, and I think that is the approach that most people want to see in Hoboken, as do the leaders in our police department.
Thank you. Anything else? Okey-dokey. So we will start with Pat on this one, and this one's pretty open-ended. How will you make extra efforts to be transparent and engage the community if elected?
I told you earlier, John, not walking in the back door, walk through the front door and expose every deal is. I'm already outspoken, and I'm always about accountability. And we got to get stronger registration, not that it matters. I always say a criminal not scared of the law, and lawyers learn how to change legislation. That's impossible. I just hope that people that do run for public office gain the integrity that we hope that might not never happen, but there's not much we can really do but like stay on and hold accountable for their actions, and definitely stay involved. I'm seeing people running that never even come to meetings, never voted in Hoboken. So if you stay involved and let people know you're wide awake and stay awoke and watch them and hold accountable for their actions, that's the only way we can demand transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Lauren?
Thank you. I will be an extremely transparent councilperson. I am someone who is very communicative with everyone around me, and every day I interact with my bosses at work, opposing counsel, the associates who work below me, and I am very open with everyone. I have no interest in being a councilperson who does not serve the needs of my constituents, and I have every means and desire to do so. I also take issue with the categorizations that have been thrown around about lawyers during this conversation tonight. I am a lawyer myself. I was actually the tenth lawyer in my family, and every single person in my family is an ethical lawyer who has never done anything unethical, and I think it's not fair to cast dispersions among a whole occupation based on the sins of a few people.
Thanks, Lauren. Councilwoman Fisher?
Yeah, I mean transparency, as everyone knows, is a big fundamental issue for me. Not issue for me, is a foundational issue for me, sorry. I think I'm just going to keep doing what I do. I have sent two hundred and sixty-two newsletters in the last five years on issues that are very important, that don't have a lot of transparency, things that I really feel that the community should be aware of, not in a biased way. I typically try to inform first and then just let people know what my view is and let people decide if they want to agree or not. And I'm just going to keep doing that. And when we see situations, whether it's locally, or at the county level, or at the state level, where there's not transparency, I'm going to fight for that. Recently, there was a state law that tried to significantly reduce the public's access to public information through Oprah. And I fought, I, we passed, I sponsored a resolution to fight that law change. I sided with all of our journalists that use that for investigative reporting. Like, the core of me will always fight for the public to have a seat at the table and for transparency.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Ian?
So I think that this relates to these outsized campaign contributions that you see, because I think it's a matter of integrity. And I think when I suggest that you all question a candidate that's receiving a large sum from an individual donator, I think you should question, why are they getting some, why are they getting five hundred, a thousand, two thousand or more dollars from somebody? And in the vein of my own transparency, I have a phone number that I'm giving out to everybody to use, whether I'm campaigning or elected. And I speak plainly. I'm very different from anybody that's presently on the council. I just tell you how it is. I'm not going to use any subterfuge or any, anything that I presently find distasteful with our city government at present.
Thank you. Marla?
I mean, I think, again, we all agree that transparency in government is very important, and I'm certainly no exception to that. I think, one, just transparency to your councilperson is accessibility. You know, it's about being responsive to the emails you get, which is something that I will be very, make a high, high priority to respond to every constituent question that comes my way. Obviously, communication outward will be a critical part of my going forward. I think from a city council level and what we can do for greater city transparency is, for example, as we're talking about like how people voted on different issues, yes, it's kind of difficult to find it now. If you've ever gone to the city council, you've got to find like the minutes and this, that, and the other. I think one suggestion I have would be to advocate for a councilperson-by-councilperson record of how they voted on different issues that is just easy to get to from the city's website, which needs some overhaul in terms of making what information is available, easierly available, a little bit more user-friendly, because some things we talk about, "Oh, it's not transparent," are actually there if you like know how to find it, which isn't always the case. So I think it's also just using technology in a better way to organize information to make it, not to make it easier to access.
Thank you. Councilwoman Giottino?
Thank you. So several days after the COVID lockdown, we were to have a city council meeting, and at the time I was council president, and I knew it was really important that the public had access to the city council for transparency reasons. So I actually reached out to Stevens and told them my dilemma, and they informed me of this product called Zoom. And they let us use their Zoom, and they had two of their staffers on the meeting with me, and they were letting people in and out of the meeting room. And after that, I took a class with them, and then I bought my own Zoom account, which the city used for two years that I paid for. Of course, transparency is important, and I think that's probably the best example you will get. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right.
When I say, when I call out facts and I share my experiences with you with respect to what Ms. Myers said about lawyers, I sit in the city council meeting for the last twenty or thirty years, and when I get those agendas, to see the money the lawyers rack up and the lies and the deceptiveness, don't disrespect, no disrespect to her, I'm calling lawyers liars through what I've experienced in this city. Furbulous lawsuits, thousands and thousands of taxpayer dollars, all on legislation that they've changed and manipulated. So when that's my opinion, and I own my own opinion, that's why I named the lawyers that I dealt with in Hoboken as liars. Coodles to working hard and going to school, or any other attorney, but if this shoe fit, wear it. And what that being said, I'm wrapping it up saying this. Brought and paid for, I don't care how you sit on this stage. She said, "Well, I'm a lawyer, I'm a lawyer," and robbing this and that. When you brought and paid for, you cannot give access to the people in this community. You are a committed to robbing power. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Okay. I have never met Patricia until this evening, so I, and I don't even think we formally met because you came late, but I've been nothing but courteous towards Jen and Tiffany and Ian and Marla, and I do not think it's fair to say that I am someone who is bought and paid for. I, okay. I am someone who is very ethical. I am doing this for my own reasons. I recently moved to Hoboken. I had no affiliation with anyone in the city council or the mayor prior to moving here, and I am running because I want to help make the community better and invest in the community. I have no allegiances to anyone on either sides of the aisle. I've worked for Democrats and Republicans in my professional life. I work and collaborate with people all of the time, and I don't think it's fair to categorize me as someone who is like that when we've never even had a conversation, you didn't even say hello to me when you walked in.
Ma'am, I don't need to. You're all over the press. You picked up petitions at the last minute.
Pat?
You picked up petitions at the last minute, and you was recruited to run. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you, come on. Let's move it along, unless someone, that isn't, Pat has something to say. Okay. Now, we're going to start the next question, we're going to let Lauren lead us off, okay? Audience question, do you believe that all public school children, public charter or local district, get a portion of any due payment in lieu of taxes, better known as pilot agreement, is approved by the council?
Thank you. I am a huge proponent of public schools, and I believe that every student and child in our community should be able to access good public education. I think on pilot specifically, I will evaluate those on a case-by-case basis. The recent one that was just approved for the affordable housing development at Eleventh and Willow, I would have also supported because it is coming with affordable housing that our community desperately needs. So I am someone who will look and evaluate proposals as they come to me and decide whether or not it would be appropriate for a pilot in that situation.
Very good, thanks, Lauren. Councilwoman Fisher?
Sure, pilots are super complicated, and even more complicated in Hoboken. I generally do not support pilots for any large residential building. I was one of two votes. Councilwoman Giottino and myself voted against the pilot for seven seventy house, right, my first year on the council. I did vote for the affordable housing one because it's a smaller building and it's not putting kids into our public school system. It's for seniors, primarily for seniors. So what I would say, the reason why it's complicated is because of the state funding formula. Right? So we've been through the last couple of years having a public discussion on how to get some of the money from the seven seventy house pilot earmarked, that was earmarked for our public schools, and it's been challenging. And I've been at the forefront of that. I, you know, I delve in, we went through, I tried to understand very specifically how the funding formula works. And the way it works is if we get one dollar to the public schools, then twenty-eight cents from the charter schools gets taken away from them and given to the public schools. And as an elected official, I can't support something that is going to take money away from our charter schools. So we actually, the charter schools and the district school, the Board of Ed, selected four city council members to work with to solve this issue, myself, Councilwoman Jabor, Councilwoman Ramos, and Councilwoman Doyle. And they've reached out to the mayor to sit down and have a meeting.
Can you wrap it up?
Yep, we haven't gotten that scheduled yet. It's complicated, but we're all, you know, we are all focused on trying to support getting money from our pilots into all of our public schools.
Thank you. Ian?
Yeah, so for clarification, the question wasn't whether or not I support a pilot. The question was, if there's a pilot, do I support the money being distributed amongst all public schools? Keep in mind, district schools, which would be. I'm just clarifying.
Go ahead.
But, so I am in favor of both district and charter schools sharing in whatever special allocated money is left over from a pilot. I do think that there are bad pilots. I don't think that all pilots are bad, but I think that it's unfair to have a pilot with a special distribution that only goes to the district schools. And again, because it's a little confusing, the district schools would be only with our, you know, our high school and the Board of Ed's schools, whereas the charter schools are our three charter schools, which would be Elysian, Ola, and of course, HCS.
Thank you very much. Marla?
So if you support all of Hoboken public schools, I think, you know, the charters provide unnecessary addition to the options here, as well as, you know, we do have an enrollment crisis, and we need, we simply need those charters now to educate all of our children. And I do like that people have an option. I think it adds character, it adds community, it adds another reason to live in Hoboken. Right? As for the pilots, I think my understanding of it, and I've talked to many people about this, is that the state law is what is preventing pilot money from going through the formula. So pilots, you know, payment in lieu of taxes, it's not taxes. Tax dollars go through the formula, and some go to the charters, according to the formula. Pilot is not taxes, so it doesn't go through the formula. And I think the city has tried to go through machinations of like, how to figure out, how to avoid the prohibition from the state on like, if it's not taxes, it can't go through the formula. I think to fix this problem, no one's happy. I mean, the public school's not happy because their share of it wasn't going through. They're not even object, you know, even if they were not to object to it going to the charters, nobody's getting it, so no one's happy. So we need to find a solution that makes everybody a little bit happy. I'm sure the public schools would like the whole amount, and charters want their share, but we need to agree to share it, and we need to go to the state, and we need to say, "Look, we need more flexibility with our pilots. Please, can you change this law that doesn't allow us to share it with the charters? Because it's creating all sorts of havoc in Hoboken." I think we need good relationships with our upcoming assembly person, our upcoming senate leader who's going to be at the state, to make sure that those things happen. And I think that's definitely a big part of my approach, is like we need to build those relationships and not alienate those individuals or, you know, those governmental bodies.
Thank you. And I like that phrase, havoc in Hoboken. I'm going to have to start using that more often. Councilwoman Giottino?
Thank you. Both Tiffany and Marla are correct. It is the state level where the flaw is, and I am very happy that four council members are working with both the charter schools and the district schools on this issue. And if there is a solution where they can have the state law, the state formula changed, so we have the ability to give money to the schools directly, I am perfectly, I am totally supportive of both the district and the three charter schools getting money. Thank you.
You're welcome. And Pat?
I too support it for both the charter school and the public school, because the charter schools are public schools. It's just give you more of an option for like a more quieter base with the charter schools. But I have a question for Tiffany and Jen. Where's the money from seven seventy? Are we waiting for the state, from what I'm hearing tonight? Are we waiting for the state to allocate that money? Why just the municipality can't do what they say?
You could answer if you want. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, we get the money, the city gets the money through the pilot payment. Effectively, just the way the municipal, like, budget works, it just kind of sits in our surplus, right? We have large cash balances for rainy day, and so there isn't necessarily any amount that is specifically earmarked, because in order to actually give it to the public schools and the district schools and charter schools, et cetera, we're actually going to have to have another resolution. We had a, you know, a resolution that passed four years ago. It's not, it's not a resolution that is effective today. It more represented the kind of the spirit at the time, and for us then to move money to the schools, we'll have to have another resolution reflecting whatever the spirit at the time is. I think most people support, not all council members support, the money to the district schools, or the public schools, but the majority of us do.
Thank you. All right.
I think you wanted to know if it was earmarked. Is that what you were asking? Like, is it specifically earmarked, or is it not earmarked?
Okey-dokey. Now, last one, and then we'll let everyone do their close. So we're at Councilwoman Fisher. It actually, somebody took the time to print out their question and glue it onto the note card. I'd never seen that before. Very, very nice looking. So, anyway, it's a bit of a long question, but the bottom line is, in February twenty twenty-three, the council passed an amendment to their rent control order. It's by a five-four vote, and it was later vetoed by the mayor. And do you think, what do you think you could do as a council member to reach a compromise on this important topic? And we will start with Councilwoman Fisher. Okay.
So the vote that night actually was the compromise. We had advocates for the landlord and advocates for tenants that hadn't been in a room together in decades come together and actually come up with a compromise that would have been very supportive of tenants and that the landlords could accept. My concern all along was if we poke the landlord advocate and the landlords in the eye too much, then it will trigger them having a referendum and putting rent control on the ballot, and that's what they're talking about right now. Right? We could have avoided that. We had a compromise. The mayor didn't need to veto it. It was one of those where everyone was, felt a little bit of pain. Everyone came together, and it was actually tragic. And if we do have a referendum, I'm not confident that the landlords aren't going to win. That's a double negative. I'm not confident that the renters are going to actually be able to succeed in this. So I'm going to do whatever I can to continue supporting rent control if it brings the parties back, if the referendum. If it brings the parties back, if the referendum puts the parties back in the room together, I will be completely supportive of whatever compromise we can come up with to preserve as much of our rent control as possible.
Thank you. Ian?
So I think it was a mistake for the mayor to veto this particular compromise, especially considering the two parties that made the compromise and how they normally can't agree on anything. I, I, I believe that the point that the mayor was trying to make involved vacancy decontrol, and I, I disagree with his opinion on it, and hopefully this will come back up for a vote without the negative consequences that could result as of, as if this goes to referendum.
Thanks. Bala?
I love a compromise. It's what I've built my career on. But I think, you know, that specific ordinance, I think the concern was from people who voted against it, including the mayor, as I understand it, is that there were a voice in the room for the landlords, there was a voice in the room for long-term tenants, but there wasn't a voice in the room for how do we keep, to your point, vacancy decontrol? How do we keep affordable housing staying on the market, you know, for new renters coming in? And that was the voice that wasn't in the room for that compromise. But in terms of compromise, I think the compromise needs to happen, not just among the constituents that are interested in rent control, but among members of the city council. And I think that is something that I intend to bring to the city council, is the, is the intention and the ability to see where we can reach an agreement and get to an ordinance that, that does reflect both the compromise of people and of the city council.
All right, great. Councilwoman Giattino?
I was the one who actually initiated Ron Simoncini and Cheryl Fallon speaking, which was amazing that they actually got in a room and spoke, because I don't know the last time they spoke. It was definitely not within the last decade. And it was a back and forth and back and forth, and both were willing to give up things and both stood firm on things, and we got to a compromise with them. So that was, I thought that was a great success. But I am willing to get in the room with anyone and talk about this rent control ordinance and ways we can make it better. There's so many things that are so unclear in it. Tenants don't understand it. The landlord, the landlords don't understand it. They removed the updated rent that people used to have, and landlords don't even know that's been removed. So it, it, the law's just very confusing, but obviously I am willing to compromise, and I will meet with anyone, help us just discuss it. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat?
I too was a part of that whole rent control. I met Cheryl Fallon, and this is a true story, a couple of decades ago, and Ron Simoncini. I gave him a little pet name, Ron Tramascini. And every time I would see Cheryl, when he, when they first put it on referendum, this was years ago, I was like, I would tease both sides. I didn't want to see either person be impacted, rent control or this to Simoncini. So when you guys came together that night, even though we got out of there crazy late, when you guys came together and, and compromised, and the next, very next day or two to see the mayor veto it, I was upset because I felt that was disingenuine. He was not at one meeting, he was not there to witness. Seeing us come together was a good thing, but unfortunately, they vetoed it, and now I'm sitting back waiting again, hoping that you'll get a better turnout. But we cannot say we'll get a better turnout, because we're gonna have two rubber stampers, so it's gonna be much of the same. So good luck.
Thank you. Lauren?
I am in favor of rent control and believe that there should be a cap on the amount that landlords can increase rent in a given year. I lived at the Rivington in the fifth ward, and they recently had extraordinary rent increases that were completely disproportionate to the rents that the residents were currently paying, and I was following closely what councilperson Phil Cohen was doing to address that situation. And I am someone who will also address those situations if residents are in need of help. I also think we need to continue to give the resources to our Division of Housing, who can help tenants and landlords alike understand the laws and the rent control and any upcoming ordinances or discussions that are going on in the city council. And I appreciate everyone's echo for collaboration and working together, and that is definitely something that I will do as well.
Okay. Looks like we're largely on the same page. Anything else? Yes?
I don't think the question was whether or not we support rent control, but one thing that I do want to add, I, I think this is specific to the, to the, to the ordinance, the five-to-four vote and the compromise that was reached and so forth. But I believe that our rent control ordinance is too complicated, and I also believe that because of the state 30-year exemption law, it even adds to the complication. And I think that simplification of this law, which I, I think I can maybe wade through, if it was a much simpler ordinance, it would be easier to follow, it would be better for the landlords, it would be better for the tenants. So, so that's, that's what I would like to add to that.
All right, great. Everyone else good? All right, so coincidentally, we're back to Ian, but since he opened, let's just start with Pat, then we'll go with Lauren, and then we'll go Councilwoman Fisher, and we'll end with Councilwoman Giattino, just so we don't have the same person opening and closing. So ladies and gentlemen, we have made it. Let's, uh, let's take it home. So Pat, go ahead and close us out.
All right, guys. First of all, sorry for being late, but I refuse to miss this debate tonight. I did come out and tell you guys publicly that I will not be running for the second ward, but I felt it was necessary for those hundred thousands of doors that are knocked on and the ones that offered me, and thank you, I see Ms. Maureen in the house and my husband. Thank you, guys. You know, I came to your house in the heat that day, and I really had intentions on running for the second ward. But when I analyzed it and I got the opportunity to speak to Tiffany Fisher, and I told Tiffany, when I put my name on your back, I will hold you accountable to do what you've been doing, but we gotta do even more. We need her to win. I will be fully supporting her because I want to put my focuses on the Board of Education. You're gonna get the same powerhouse Patty with the boxing gloves. Anything you guys need still, I will be there for you, the second ward residents, but I'm closing and saying this, I need your support. On November 7th, come out, please, and support Tiffany Fisher for the second ward. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Always full of surprises. So Lauren, go right ahead.
Thank you. It was a pleasure being here tonight and participating in the debate. I want to reiterate my platform, that is that I will come to the city council with new ideas in the hope to make real progress here in Hoboken, to make sure that we are safe, clean, family-friendly, and business-friendly. Hoboken should be a city that is an example throughout New Jersey and throughout the whole entire country, and I'd like to bring my ideas, my legal expertise and experience working in law firms, in government, public service, nonprofits, to make real progress for the residents of the sixth ward and Hoboken.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fisher?
Sure. Thank you for joining. In closing, I just want to emphasize what I think truly matters to all of us Hoboken residents. As your neighbor, I believe we deserve a representative who embodies our shared values, someone who listens, engages, and tirelessly works for our community. We need a transparent and informative leader who can tackle both the big and small issues that impact our lives. We need a representative who's not just a yes vote, but an independent voice you can rely on, someone unafraid to ask tough questions and always prioritize Hoboken. As your current council representative, I've aimed to be that advocate for you. I have a proven record of delivering tangible results by engaging with our community, hearing your concerns, and with over 250 newsletters, ensuring you're informed about every issue that matters to you. And I firmly believe that more voices offer us the best chance for best outcomes. While my opponent may have the Hoboken mayor's endorsement, second ward residents not only deserve an independent voice to put their interests first, not just follow the party line, it is what they want. And that voice and the qualified candidate that has experience and commitment needed to effectively address the significant opportunities and challenges we face. As we approach November election, I ask for your support once again. Vote one E. If you reelect me, I pledge to continue to be the dedicated advocate you deserve, and together, we're gonna be able to build a brighter future for Hoboken. Thank you.
Thank you. Ian?
So as John alluded to earlier, I have 25 cartoons that I scripted and wrote and animated, and if you live in the sixth ward and you watch those cartoons, I think I'm confident you'll vote for me. And if you don't watch those cartoons, you're making a mistake. In 12 years for Councilwoman Giattino and 14 for Team Bala, I've watched this town, and incidentally, I've lived here for 25 years, and yes, that was my daughter that had a meltdown right in front of all of you. But in 12 and 14 years respectively, I've noticed we've got no pool, and that in itself isn't an embarrassment, but the embarrassment is that we've been promised one numerous times. We also don't have a movie theater anymore, which is sad to me, and to have a movie theater in town means we probably need to have something like a redevelopment agreement so that the space can be a low rent. We're never gonna get a movie theater back because of what happened there. I've done my best as an individual citizen, as a private citizen, to add a ton of wholesome, family-friendly activities to Hoboken through my business, and I'm asking each of you to vote for me so I can do that for this town. I'm not promising anything that I'm not gonna deliver. I will deliver for Hoboken, I promise.
Thanks, Ian. Marla?
The primary reason why I'm running for city council is because I love Hoboken, and I really want to work hard and use the talents that I, that I possess to make sure that Hoboken continues to thrive and becomes an even better place to live, raise a family, retire, whatever suits you. And I really want to make sure that our politics and our government reflect what is best in us and what is potential to bring us together. As a councilperson, I'm gonna bring a new and different approach. I'm gonna focus on solutions and working constructively with colleagues and the public, and know that this is the best way to bring results for the second ward. My voice, my voice is my own. I've worked on it for a lot of years, and it's something I'm proud of, and it's definitely mine and independent. So I'm a little bit disappointed that Ms. Waiters has now endorsed my candidate here, or my opponent here, but Pat, I'm, you know, I think that in the end, there's probably some things that you and I probably both want to see happen in Hoboken. I'd love to have a conversation with you to learn more about what, what you, what your priorities are, because whether I win or lose, I think that we both share a desire to better Hoboken.
Pat, there's no rebuttal.
For the people, just for the record.
There's no...
People is my prime.
All right. Councilwoman?
Thank you. In closing, I want to emphasize the importance of on-the-ground experience, longstanding relationships, and a proven track record of problem solving. These are the qualities that define effective leadership, especially in city government, and they are what I bring to the table. I'm a big listener, and my connections with our community have allowed me to truly understand your concerns, as well as your hopes and dreams for Hoboken. It's through these relationships that I've been able to collaborate effectively and make tangible improvements to our city. But let me be clear, working with the mayor does not equate to being a rubber stamp. It means advocating for our community's best interests while finding common ground to move forward. I have demonstrated my ability to do this time and time again throughout my tenure. As your representative on the city council, I will always put Hoboken's well-being first. I ask for your trust and your vote to continue the work we've started to build a brighter future for our beloved city. Thank you, and let's continue to make Hoboken the best it can be. Good night.
Thank you very much. So let's have a hand for all the candidates. And just a few, you know, shout-outs and thank-yous. First of all, Council President Emily Jabor, Councilman at Large Jopetaro, they came to both events, so thank you for attending in person. And thank you, everyone, that took the time to show up in person, and thank you for everyone that watched us on Facebook. We had about 100 total viewers both nights, and the one for Friday has over 1,500 views, so I think that's pretty successful. And it wouldn't have been possible without the Quality of Life Coalition. Thank you, Eduardo, for helping get this together. And he had the very unenviable jo, unenviable job of being the timekeeper. I've done it before. It's really not fun, but he did it with no complaints, well, minimal complaining. So that, and of course, we, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Stevens, thank you Greg and your team, thank you Beth McGrath and her team as well. This is a lovely space, you know, hope we could use it again in the future. And with that, I will wish you a good night, and don't forget to vote on November 7th, and there's voter registration right in the back. Have a great one.